Good evening. It is December 13th, 2018. This is the Acushnet Planning Commission. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being audio and videotaped per Mass General Laws. Be kind enough to introduce yourself from heading around.
Henry Young Planner.
Ryan Nishams.
Phil Moll.
Mark Sannerizio.
Mark DeSova.
Rick Ellis.
With that, I will take a minute. Probably, I don't know if it'll make it, but Rick's dad passed away. His name was Dick Ellis, and he was a strong, strong man on the planning commission. So I'd just like to give Rick our condolences in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. With that, minutes of November 15th, 2018. Gentlemen, I don't know if you had the minutes, opportunity to read the minutes. There were two of them, one from regular session and one from executive session.
Take the motion, accept it?
Accept. To the second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that? Vouchers.
One small typo. We didn't review any mails, but we did review the mail.
Next time you see Dawn, give her a little.
Usually what I end up reviewing is my phone.
If you'd be, gentlemen, be kind enough to sign these vouchers and pass them on, please. Thank you, Mark. Maybe I did. See how many I got here? I keep scaling all the time.
Take it out of your bag.
That's okay. Item number three is the mail. Let's see what we have. Oh, for media, early, December 13th, 2018. "Commission Reminds Public Employees About Restrictions on Gifts." So if you guys get any gifts over 50 bucks, you gotta give it back. Item number four.
Much be a cop.
Want to do a rough date? You want to do that now or you want to wait till the end?
Wait till the end.
That's fantastic.
I don't need to give my wife an excuse.
I don't need to give the gift. Let's see, guys. Item number five, memo from the Board of Selectmen offers proposed timelines for town meeting and memo regarding capital requests. To all this, what do we have here? Board of Selectmen, Robert St. James Finance Chair, O'Brien Oval, Town Meeting Schedules, December 12th, budgets for all departments due, January, February, Finance Committee budget hearings, uh, budget hearings, I'm sorry. February 5th, open town meeting warrant, March 5th, closed town meeting warrant, March Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen Article hearings. April 1st, town election, April 12th, warrant to pass, April 29th, first newspaper announcement of town meeting, May 6th, second newspaper announcement of town meeting, May moderates meeting, May 13th, town meeting. I'm sure we're all set with everything. Yeah, Henry?
Yeah, the first thing on that list is the budgets are due. I have a special dispensation to turn this, turn our budget in tomorrow because we'll be in tonight. So that'll come up in the planners update.
Fantastic. Item number six, letter dated 11th, 2018, from Kelly Cosgrove, Sessas Office, regarding 17 Cushing Lane. I don't know if this one is, what do we have here? Gentlemen, is there? Yeah, just right there. Thank you. Let's see, 17 Cushing Lane. Do you know anything about this or you want me to read it? I'll read it right into the minutes. "I, gentlemen, received a letter of non-recorded plan from Joe Voda Health regarding the above-mentioned parcel. The letter from Michael Cosgrove and Associates is attached to this correspondence. I have also attached the current FY19 property record card for your review. I have an unrecorded plan available in my office for our review if necessary. I just want to reiterate, this parcel is one real estate account containing 10.9 acres that would 8.61 acres receiving a Chapter 61 credit. Technically, there are 2.29 acres receiving a Chapter 61A credit. This is already a dwelling on the property that would reduce the non-Chapter credit acreage to .91 acres. With this proposal of the new dwelling to be built, there are currently .91 acres remain without Chapter 61A credit. This would not conform with common zoning. If the property owners were to reduce the acreage receiving for Chapter 61A credit to potentially conform to creating another dwelling, then they would need to give the first right of refusal to the town to possibly make this change and use it void to forego by the time." Thank you for your interest now. So I guess this is just them on 61A. I don't know.
That, uh, that plan came from the board when we subdivided it.
Yep.
And they, um, the lot that subdivided off is actually all in.
Chapter lane?
That's right, yeah. So they got, they got as far as getting the building permit before it came to light that it couldn't.
So now what they have to do, they have to go in front of the Board of Selectmen to put the first right of refusal for 61A, am I correct?
Right.
We don't have to do anything with this, right?
It's been action on our part. They have to go to the Board of Selectmen.
Yep. Okay. All you guys understand that? Rick?
Rick? That's not something normal, we would be aware.
We still have to, whatever they ask us to do, whether it's a fire or anything, they have to tell us for 61 unless it goes through all the procedure.
Yeah, I mean, what's happened in the past is that it's up to the selectmen, but the selectmen put it out to the different boards to ask if they have any interest in it. And once in a while, conservation has some interest in land.
So we will see this come back around to us?
They do it the way they've done right in the past.
In order for them to do that, they have to pay the back taxes on it.
They do.
Take your back out.
Yep.
With that, we're doing pretty good. Six, 30 minutes, 6:45, we have to meet in both. Wait for one minute, we have continuation of public hearing for Moniz Estates. So we give a minute, go from there. Anybody hear from that one other than, other than you folks? You want to wait for them to talk about it, Henry, or how do you want to do it?
Uh, let's wait a couple minutes.
Okay, no problem.
I can do the planner.
Once we do that, that's great. Fantastic.
So Mark just read the to-do list in preparation for town meeting. One is capacity one. One is to come up with a budget for next year. So this is the proposed budget. Comes in at a total of just north of $55,000, which is actually a .2% reduction from last year because we're decreasing our office supplies expense. We have not in the past couple years burnt through our office supply amounts of, we've reduced that.
We don't get a raise. Does you guys get a raise? We don't get a raise?
Apparently, we get a 10, we get a 10 times raise.
Congratulations.
So with that, gentlemen, is there a motion to accept this?
I think so.
To the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to sign anything and send it in or you all say?
You can sign, copy, I'll deliver it to a finance.
All of us should just mind this, Mark.
Pass that down. We're doing pretty good tonight. With that, we'll give it a two-minute break. Mike, to the way that all these folks do, going from news.
Sessman Lee's going to come in?
That's okay, we're back from, uh.
So we have to go into public hearing.
Public hearing, continuation of public hearing for Moniz Estates. I know there was, uh.
We have to vote to go back, to go into public hearing.
Is there a motion to go into public hearing for Moniz Estates?
Motion to go into public hearing.
To the second?
Second.
All in favor? I don't have any animus with that. We'll turn it over to you, Henry, because you were there and I guess some of the people were at the selectmen meeting.
All right, so we asked Jeff Tolman from SciTech, the engineer from SciTech, who's working on Moniz Estates, and Dan Moniz to come to Board of Selectmen meeting this week on Tuesday. So they did attend and they made a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. I think it really, it went really well. We talked about waivers, we talked about water pressure, we talked about road issues. As far as waivers are concerned, the, the only waiver that Mr. Moniz was seeking were sidewalks. There was a lot of discussion regarding that, and the Board of Selectmen were pretty insistent that they would like to see sidewalks. So there was a, I think by the end of the meeting, Mr. Moniz kind of indicated that that's the route he'll go.
Side sidewalks.
Sidewalks. We'll wait to see if that, I expect to see that on the plan the next time it comes in. We also talked about water pressure. So there was a discussion of, you know, looping. And I think Jeff was able to clarify that the loop that's going to be created is, occurs when they bring water in down more, and it will loop in and provide improved water pressure for that whole community. And then there will be a single line that, a dead end line that goes out 1,700 feet for the 17 lots that are, that are there. So I think once everybody understood that, they were all in agreement, that was a good thing. We talked about the road, which we've talked about, and we had a legal opinion from Casey's Law that says you can extend off of Blaze to create Allison Drive. So that point was made and accepted. We talked about the naming issue because you've got Margaret, which leads to 300 feet of Blaze, and then here comes Allison. So from a public safety standpoint, that doesn't really work. So the consensus of the people who are in attendance there was to rename Blaze Margaret, and so Margaret will continue to the cul-de-sac, and then the new road will be Allison. That has an impact to the people who are on Blaze Drive, so I think there's going to have to be some resolution to that as well. But from a public safety standpoint, that's the right thing to do. Let's see, also, not related to that meeting, they have made their deposit with the town, so we can send that to Tivik's, which is now SW Cole. They changed their, their file.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and that does remind me, another issue that came up regarding the road was if you can think of Blaze Drive in as a cul-de-sac, then Allison Drive is a road off of that. So that creates somewhat of a uncoordinated intersection, if you will. So Selectmen Chapa came up with a brilliant idea, and that is to put a small, like a mountable rotary in there, just in the center, which will, I think, provide more order to the vehicular traffic passing through there.
Right.
Also, for, you know, the neighbor, there's one neighbor who is concerned about lights. You know, when you drive your car at night and you're coming down towards, from Allison to Blaze, you're going to get a lot of headlights. Right as the cars came up to that intersection, by putting the rotary in there, now you can think they're not going to be coming straight in and banging the left, so they're going to naturally go to the right and then circle back around. So I think that is going to help mitigate the, that problem of headlights into, to the house. So that was a great idea, and I expect to see that incorporated into the next set of plans that we see, or into the final set of plans. So that was pretty much it in terms of, and there was a lot of conversation, but you can condense it down to those points. Any questions on that?
Any idea how big the area would be inside of that cul-de-sac that would be the mountable portion, I guess?
It doesn't have to be large.
Well, I mean, I'm almost thinking it'd be good to have some kind of feature in there.
Right, right.
To block the headlights.
Some landscaping.
To block the headlights.
Yes.
To slow people down, you know, that, that kind of thing. I mean, 1,700 feet's a pretty, pretty long road.
Right.
You, you want people to slow down and, and not try and do a speedway through the, through the cul-de-sac.
Comes to a curve, though. It comes this way, then it comes down.
Right. But it is, I'm glad you brought that up. In the discussion with Moniz and Tolman afterwards, we thought that it might be a good idea to put some plantings in there to even further provide mitigation of the headlights to, I think it's.
A tree, I mean, a, a tree in some lower structure. That'd be a bad idea.
So I thought it was a very good meeting. It's kind of unusual that we would go to the Board of Selectmen to present, but I think in the end it was good practice for a large subdivision.
They also run DPW, too, right?
Right, since they run DPW, they have authority over water pressure. So, you know, discussion of the loop is appropriate for them to be brought to speed on.
Gentlemen, any questions? Folks, anybody from the audience have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, please. Joanne Demarest from Two Blaze Drive. Mr. Young, they also mentioned sidewalks going out more lane to Hathaway Road.
Right.
Was there any more discussion in, you know, who makes those final decisions? They also had thrown out, let's just put sidewalks on one half of the street.
Right.
I was just wondering if there was any further, or, you know, it would come back to the planning board for those decisions?
Right, so, thank you.
Okay.
I'll try to answer all that. As we were talking about sidewalks, there was a discussion of, well, instead of having sidewalks on two sides of the street, could we have a compromise of having sidewalks on one side of the street? And then there was a discussion of maybe that sidewalk could be extended all the way down to Hathaway. Other, the issue with that is you start getting into what I call scope creep. We start putting requirements on the developer to do work outside of the subdivision, so we don't really have the authority necessarily to do that. So I think weighing it all, I don't want to speak for Mr. Moniz, but I get the sense he was just resigned to build sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Of the new street.
Of the new street, Allison. So I don't want to, that's his comment to make, but that's, that's the sense I got of where he was heading.
They had also asked last night about bringing in underground utilities, and they had said yes to that.
Yes.
But at our last meeting here, Mr. Bettencourt had asked about gas, and we have propane, myself and Coria's. It ends at the bottom of Margaret Street, so we are wondering if in fact they're going to bring gas through to Allison and would like to be able to connect to that. And with more maybe roadwork being done with the flow in the cul-de-sac and such, again, I just don't want, if that's a possibility, to be bypassed.
I think that's a good, they, they will not be here this week, but they will be here at our next meeting, Mr. Tolman and Mr. Moniz.
Okay.
So you need to ask that question directly to them. That said, this is the time to do that.
Okay.
You know, while we don't have any asphalt down, and there's no moratorium on cutting into the new asphalt, this is a time to make decisions like that.
It is up to them.
It is up to them, but what is not up to them is will they be above ground or below ground? So they need a waiver to put utilities above ground, and they're not seeking that. They're going to put the utilities below ground.
Anybody else? Please feel free. That's it, guys. With that.
So you need to continue, though.
Yep. Is there a motion to?
Motion to continue public hearing.
Until our next meeting, what do you guys think? July, August?
As far out as possible.
I want to, I want to get it done before the summer.
17th, okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Of January?
Sure.
Okay, that's Thursday. Same time, same place, we'll make it 6:45, is that okay?
Yep.
So with that, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Go back and continue.
Continue it.
Continue it to the back of the public session. Is there a motion?
I may have a motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Seagull.
Pray for no snow on 17th.
Yeah, we'll be in for that season.
We're, we're there already, actually.
Don't say nothing about snow. They don't have snow for you, do they? With that, we'll give it a five-minute break, and we'll be like that. We're back. For town meeting at the Planning Commission. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing for 550 Main Street?
Motion open, Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, I'll read this whole thing into the minutes, right? We just do it formally.
Right.
Acushnet Planning Commission knows a public hearing, modified site plan review in Sol, a special permit, 550 Main Street, map 11, lot 4 and 7, project Acushnet Mass 2 LLC formerly CEC Solar 1060 LLC. Notice is hereby given to the Acushnet Planning Commission. We'll hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 13th at 7:15 PM in the planning office, 130 Main Street, Harding Way, second floor. This meeting is to be held to discuss a modification to previously approved site plan review and renew the special permit for a 2.0 MW solar array proposed to the project Acushnet MA2 LLC formerly CEC Solar 1060. Property owned by Harold and Carol Westgate. The engineer is Field Engineering Incorporated of Massachusetts. The plans are accompanying documentation may be reviewed at the town clerk's office, 122 Main Street during regular business hours in the paper November 29th and December 6th. With that, we'll turn it over to you, gentlemen. Basically, basically, folks, what we're doing is this is just a renewal plan, the solar project that we had. The time period has come up, so we're just renewing it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Greg Carey of Complete Energy Collective with Rich Riccio of Field Engineering. As you stated, this is a renewal for a special permit that was issued two years ago by the planning board for a community solar project at 550 Main Street. The only change in the plan, which Rich will go over, is the, that which we consider a minor modification, is the addition of an energy storage container unit on the site. The purpose of that is that we are now in a new solar program with the state called SMART. The state is now encouraging developers to include energy storage with their projects, and the purpose of energy storage basically is to hold temporarily some of the power that's generated from these solar arrays on-site so that they can meet peak demand at different times of the day. The state DOE are conducted a study and released their findings not too long ago. The benefits of energy storage include reducing the price of electricity, lowering peak demand and deferring investment in new infrastructure, reducing the cost to integrate renewable generation, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, increasing the grid's overall flexibility, reliability, and resiliency, and generating nearly $600 million in new jobs. So we think this is a minor change to the plan that was approved. I'd ask Rich just to point out where the change is occurring on the plan.
And also just have copies of what was submitted in the green cards for the file. Yeah, basically, as Greg said, the plan itself is unchanged limits of work, the number of panels. The only change to the plan itself is the addition of a, of a second pad here for the energy storage container to be contained within itself and within the fence line. Same route for interconnections back out to Main Street via a combination of an underground line and overhead poles. There's, there's really no other changes to the plan.
It's just, it's an upgrade for what Sol fails out. It's just a new thing like computers, right? They wanted a little add-on to it.
That's right. That's exactly right. Gentlemen, any questions? Folks from the audience, any questions? Please feel free, this is just, we've been through this before, we've been through the whole thing, this is just a renewal of the same thing with a little addition to this. Would anybody like to say anything?
Just want to ask, is there any noise from the storage facility?
Very, very little. It's contained in a steel container, basically, so there's very little noise.
Does the storage affect the Butters' electronics in their home?
No.
In any form or fashion?
It does not.
Okay. Anybody else? Please feel free. With that, gentlemen, is there a motion to accept this? We have to read this at, ground-mounted solar facility, 550 Main Street.
Greg recommended a motion to approve both the site plan certificate and the special permit.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve the second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any animus?
We do not sign the plan or the special permit or the site plan review until after the.
28:30. Okay. With that, that one is done. You guys are up for the next one. With that, we'll take a five-minute break. Sorry, we're quicker than we thought we are, folks. Back from, back again from our commercial break. It being 7:30, is there a motion to open the public hearing on 355 Main Street?
Motion open.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Notice to see if I give this to the Acushnet Conservation Commission. Oh, wrong one. Where do I have this? I should go ditto. Acushnet Planning Commission, notice of public hearing, site plan review, and Sol a special permit. That's the wrong one, too. Don't mind me, go on to 22, 588.
355.
What's this one?
It's 355 Main.
Ditto like the last one, except 355. With that, we'll hand it over to you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'll, I won't push through any of it.
You can go through. We've got 15 minutes.
My presentation.
Feel free to go through whatever you want to.
We're making, this is very similar to 550 Main Street. The site plan for 350 Main Street is the same as it was except for one storage, energy storage unit that we're adding to the site plan, and Rich can show you where that is. Other than that, nothing else has changed.
Correct. It's the same, the same plan that was previously approved with the exception of an additional pad for equipment, the energy storage compartment there. Same screening, same fence line, everything that was previously requested and required under the permit approval is shown on the plan.
Yeah, but I don't think I told you before, but I'll tell you now, the reason. adding to the site plan, and Rich can show you where that is. Other than that, nothing else has changed.
Correct. It's the same, the same plan that was previously approved with the exception of an additional pad for equipment, the energy storage compartment there. Same screening, same fence line, everything that was previously requested and required under the permit approval is shown on the plan.
Yeah, but I don't think I told you before, but I'll tell you now, that the reason we have not built either project is because the utility company has not issued an interconnection permit. Without an interconnection permit, we can't get a building permit. This project and other projects, I understand, are in a group study by the utility company, and we don't know what the results of that group study are going to be other than there are certainly upgrades to the utility system that are going to be necessary. But the utility company is on their own schedule, and as soon as they issue the permits that we need, we intend to begin both projects immediately.
That one just off Main Street, right? That new little thing there?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the driving range. Just on the right side. The driving range.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm just trying to get more time. With that, gentlemen, do you have any questions? Folks in the audience, is there a public hearing? Do you have any?
Open it to the audience.
Yep. Rich, can you tell us a little bit more about the noise factor as it applies to those storage units?
Yeah, we added very minimal, no more than the inverters that were previously, you know, discussed, maybe a 100-foot audible radius, couple hundred feet if that.
Right. It's very similar to the other equipment on-site, and I don't believe any residential operator will hear anything from them.
Is that a noise constant? Is that a continuous constant noise?
It is, although, as you know, at nighttime, the solar arrays don't make any noise because they're not producing power. So at nighttime, they would not be.
So it would be nothing at night?
No.
No noise?
No.
Is that the brook, that bottom line there?
Yes, it's the property line on the south, yes.
Is anything going to happen to the brook?
No, we're actually, as, and we have an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, we're allowing some of this area that was previously maintained as part of the driving range to revegetate into a more, you know, shrub-like environment that won't shade the panels but will be, you know, actually beneficial to the brook at the end of the day.
That's way, way back on the.
Right. And we're also maintaining this area all in here that's been maintained as part of the driving range. Within the wetland itself will be allowed to revegetate naturally.
Folks, anything else? Please feel free. Like, I just repeat, this is just a renewal process because they couldn't hook into EverSource. Gentlemen, is there a motion?
I recommend a motion to approve the certificate for site plan review and the special permit for 355 Main Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
With that, do you have any more paperwork?
I gave it, yeah.
Everything's ready here?
Yeah. The other aisles.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
And we're back in another two days. Do it again.
What's that? Twenty-day appeal period is up to 21 days. We'll send out a thing. Get ahold of Henry?
I will.
Will do. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
With that, our next public hearing is at 7:35. We'll be back down. Thomas? We're back again, folks.
What's that? I bet you're going to get really good game. Could be, yeah.
Is there a motion to start the public hearing on 588 Middle Road?
Motion open.
Motion open, uh, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Acushnet Planning Commission, notice of public hearing, site plan review and solar special permit, 588 Middle Road, Donald Cutino Trust and Charlotte Cutino Trust. Notice is hereby given that the Acushnet Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 13th at 7:45 PM in the planning office, 130 Main Street, Biding Way, second floor. This meeting is being held to process an application for the site plan review and special permit for a 1.9 megawatt AC solar array proposed by the Donald Cutino Trust and Charlotte Cutino Trust. The engineer is Mike Lottie of Industrial Engineering. The plans are accompanying documentation may be viewed at the town clerk's office, 122 Main Street, during regular business hours in the paper November 29th and December 6th. With that, we'll turn it over to you gentlemen. Please introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Mike Lottie with National Engineering.
I'm Andrew Bernstein from Care Site Energy. Will be the long-term owners and developer of the project.
So I know we spoke of this project. Of course, I'll run through kind of quickly what we have going on. First few pages of the plan set are the existing conditions. The Cutinos, who are here tonight, Donald and Charlotte, own the property of 588. They have a long driveway headed back to the house. Behind the house, there are two cranberry bogs that they're no longer going to be farming, so we worked with Conservation Commission to take them out of bog designation since they were dry bogs. And actually, also, we did that about, four years ago, actually, the first time.
Right.
While we were stuck in the whole group study thing the other folks mentioned, we've gone through that. So they'll be back before you again, no question about it. So since that time, we've gone through our group studies with EverSource. We haven't completely signed all documentation yet, but should be coming soon. And we had to renew the bog designation or the dry bog designation, but the Conservation Commission did that back in November. Tuesday night, I met with Conservation Commission regarding the entire project, and we're also with them, too. We're done. We have our permits. We're just waiting for the appeal period to end. I'll jump right to the, kind of, the money shot. This is just the area of the photo with, showing the bogs. This, the overall picture, showing where the solar array is going to go inside the bogs, and it just does a quick detail on the pole line that comes out. We have to replace most of the poles that serve the Cutino's house and the small business in the back with larger poles, just because we're putting three-phase power on top. Jump right to the detail page. So there'll be rows of solar. I mean, you guys have heard the stories of it tonight already, so you've heard of the ground-mounted, post-driven. There'll be approximately 7,000 solar panels. The total size is 1.9 megawatts AC. We also have energy storage proposed on the side over here. That is more of a proposal right now. We still have to work with EverSource on the energy storage, so we just want to have it on the plans in case it does come through. The solar, we absolutely put in the energy storage. We're working with EverSource on still. We're going to have the string inverters throughout the array. Each one is roughly the size of a carry-on suitcase, and there is insignificant noise out of it. It has small computer fans on it, just like the old desktops, your boot cooling fans. Once you're 10, 15 feet away, you can't hear them at all. I know the previous folks mentioned 100 feet. You will not hear them 100 feet.
That would have, it would have to be pretty noisy to hear it.
It would, yeah.
It's less than being in a refrigerator, hearing a refrigerator.
It is. You don't hear it, do you, standing like from me to you from it?
Yep.
And then on the energy storage boxes, there is a cooling fan, and there is no heat source because they generate their own heat just from being charged and discharged. And it's as loud as maybe like a window air conditioner. So again, 15, 20 feet away, you barely hear it. Hear it 30 feet away, you can't hear anything. And to this array, the nearest residence, aside from the Cutinos, which is probably 300 feet away, is the nearest neighbor, 750 feet. So things, folks won't even know it's there. We included a couple of details on the fence that'll go around the top of the berm, the road. We put a road detail in every set of plans, but all the roads are already in. We don't have to clear anything here. We're not going to cut a single tree. There will be some tree trimming as the poles go in, but no cutting trees. We worked at the Concom as far as silt fence and hay veil details around the property. They're all set. This detail just shows a side view of what the arrays will look like. The i-beam is driven in, solar panels are placed on top. This shows a detail of the banks of inverters. Each one of these is inverted, I mentioned, about the size of a suitcase. And there'll be able to be 18 or so of those throughout the array. 18 individual units, about eight or nine sets like that. Fairly straightforward project, since there's no clearing, no grading, no need for roads or wetland crossing. So this is one that'll go in very smoothly. Figure probably three to four-month construction time once we start, and we're hoping to start probably in the spring.
We're looking at March.
Maybe something, yeah. Depends on how rough the winter is, actually, so that'll be to be determined. And that's basically it. There's no neighbors here tonight, so I think everyone's satisfied with what we're doing.
But we, we do have approval. EverSource has signed us, the interconnections, and so we will build this as soon as we can start. The one problem is with the SMART program is they're getting hung up on the allocations, so that could take one to two months before we find out, because each time you get a lower incentive from the program.
Gentlemen, any questions?
The longer you wait, right?
Sorry?
The longer you wait, there's two months, right?
Exactly, yeah.
We're not losing a lot.
Gives us time to finish our detailed engineering drawings for the engineering, for all the electric shoes that are going to be out there, so, yeah.
As you probably know, this fall was the second most rainy fall on record in the state.
On record?
On record. If you're in the solar business, we happened to be, we were down 20 to 25%. It was that bad with just the sunlight.
Can you describe the fencing?
Sure.
One more time.
The fence is going to go around the edge of the berm. Just, it's more of a safety requirement, a National Electric Safety Code requirement. It'll be seven feet high, chain link with gates to get inside. Once the system is complete, we really visit, you know, I always say, once a month. That's an average, it's probably a high average. Typically, once a quarter, just to check on the equipment. We monitor it remotely, so when the system shuts off, you know, we give an email notification from the data acquisition system. And depending on why it shuts off, we dispatch a technician within 24 hours to check things out and restart things.
And what's underneath the panels? Is it going to be grass or gravelled, or?
Right now, it's all the cranberry plants. One of the things I was going to talk for what the Cutinos about is we may leave that as is, or we may scrape out the plants and just seed it and have grass.
Okay. But it will be maintained?
Yeah, oh, yes, yeah. Because if plants grow up, it could shade the array. We don't want that happening. Because everything's now, it's about three feet, three to four feet lower than the berms around it, the line that's going to be in.
And how is vehicular access to?
To the inside of the array? There's ramps here for when you have, would have the turn-rebar equipment come in. There's one here and one here. And during construction, we'll probably put a couple more in just to make it easier to get around.
So for maintenance, is there, there's a ring road that goes around?
There is. There's the entire.
Okay.
Actually, let me pull one.
Is it here?
Yeah, right. The road comes in here, and it comes all the way around, goes across the berm here. We're leaving the berm in, because we have, the first time we designed this project, there was, for the same size, was 9,000 panels, but in four years, the panel technology has increased such that we can do the same amount of power with 7,000 panels. We don't, we thought about taking out the berm initially, but we don't need to touch that. And there is a permit road around the entire array.
Knock box for the biobar and all that stuff to get in?
Yep, you can do that.
Right. You can do that. That'll, that's for the special permit.
Yes.
There are 30 plus.
Correct. How do all the panels get wired together? So like above the ground? Is it below ground?
It's above ground. In, on the array, there's, the i-beam goes in, and there's essentially a joist across it, and then there's other joists that go the other way and attach the panels to that. And all the, all the panels get connected together. There's roughly, it sets in 18 panels. We call that one string, and each one of those strings goes back to the inverter. So all of that zip-tied to the bottom of the steel purlings. And then, one from here, it goes underground back to the inverter pad, I'm sorry, transformer pad. So it gets increased in voltage from 480 to 138. So the majority of the wiring is tied up in the rafters, essentially, and the rest is underground.
And you understand the decommissioning portion of this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We got the estimate already today.
Well, that's fine, as long as you understand.
Yep, that's fine.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
I haven't got a place to put one of these things.
Anybody in the audience, pro, con, like to say anything?
Kind of certain of the Cutino, her own cameras.
Donald and Charlotte happy?
And may they emotionally accept it?
Is there a second?
Okay. Just to clarify. So the, the, the site plan review certificate and the special permit for 588?
Middle Road. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, this is, we don't sign anything, same as this the other one, the gentleman?
We have to wait for the appeal period before we invoice plans.
Who signed the papers?
And make a work.
Hope you guys can hook into EverSource.
Not as much as we do.
This is your first plan set? This is your first plan set?
I have. You want the full-size one of this one?
We also need to, I recommend we, a motion to approve the plans as well.
Okay.
Let's move. Plans as submitted this evening. Make motion we approve plans as submitted this evening for the special permit.
Five eighty-eight?
Middle of the road. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, we close the public area.
Why don't you close the public area?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, public area is closed. We'll go into the twenty or twenty-one day appeal period. After that time, Bud Lester.
Thank you.
So we're going to use this on the seventeen, so we'll get together on the seventeen, we'll endorse this.
Okay. All right, perfect. Do you want to full sign it, so I know those are approved by seventeen?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas, happy new year to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you still at that?
Oh, yes.
And she's almost as tall as I am.
Oh, my gosh.
Thanks for us.
Three days special permits?
Yeah, we have ever done.
Well, the first, the first ones were, those first ones, Main Road and Main Street.
Yeah.
We have, okay.
Oh, no, I remember that, but I mean, we just did another special permit.
Now, there was a lot of folks showing up on that one.
With that.
What else do we have?
Oh, we got a couple more yet.
Romanelli?
Eight o'clock, is Mr. Romanelli here? Fifty-two Pembroke Ave, Mr. Romanelli and Associates. Hey, John.
Morning.
Even the church is praying for you, John. Even the bells going off there?
Yes, they do.
Just remember it's Christmas. Is that a satellite duty, or is that satellite duty?
Who knows? The Christmas time. We don't like these, John, we like the other ones better.
Not colored, disapproved.
Introduce yourself.
Okay, nothing wrong. All right, I am John Romanelli of Romanelli Associates. M one six two Rockdale Avenue, Bedford, here representing Mr. Deb Fredette, who's sitting in the audience. We came to the board back in October, I think it was, with some questions that you gave us some feedback on. What Doug would like to do, he is the owner of the whole parcel, all the way from Pembroke Street on out to the Tilghorn piece over here. Is that the, is that the?
Bundling the power lines.
Bundling the power lines.
PJ Keating.
PJ Keating. He's owned it for fifteen, sixteen years. He resides in the house that's out front, fifty-two Pembroke. Couple things, the first thing we would like to do, that lot is only seventy-two hundred square feet as it sits today. We are going to add roughly, we're going to make it conforming, twelve-five, with a hundred and three feet of furniture on Pembroke Street. So that lot is no longer going to be an undersized lot. There is an existing paved, which I kind of colored here in green, twenty-two foot wide paved driveway. I think last time we did, I do have photos if you want to see them again, but we just showed some photos, I don't know if everybody was there. I heard, I remember. It's got granite curving and everything, Doug built it himself. We would like to expand James Street, two hundred and thirty-five feet to get us past where this proposed second house lot would be. The board did ask for some specific details for cross-sections, which we did add to the plan up here. We are going to super-elevate it from east to west, so the drainage continues to shed towards the wetland area. And I wanted to make note, there is another wetland line down here that we had showed.
That was from a previous, yeah.
Yeah, when we came in last year, I think it was, to the Labonte Street. So obviously, there is, there is a pretty big area of wetlands on here, and this water will continue to shed in that direction. We did show a couple of, these are twenty-six by thirty-six boxes, proposed houses. They are just proposed at this point, we don't have anything etched in stone as to what Doug wants to build. But that's roughly the size that he's looking at, he wants to build himself a house there, and his son is going to build it himself. Son's going to be the first lot, and Doug is himself going to build our second lot back. And we showed some proposed grading, again, sheath flows all going to continue in the direction that it currently goes in, so we're not shedding any water on the, but to the west here. He would like to access the first lot off of Pembroke Street with the driveway here. Water and sewer is stubbed here at the Pembroke Street, which he's paid the betterment fee. And we are going to add one to manholes for sewer to get access to the second. There is a lot of ledge in James Street, and did not want to venture up trying to come into this manhole and go down to James Street. You notice at the end of James Street, there's a huge amount of ledge back in here. So avoiding that by coming in with the utilities, we here to service the two house lots.
And that was a recommendation from Dan Van Aden?
Yes, it was.
As for the, he gave us last time, yes.
And we show a typical trench detail for construction for the utilities here. For a cover and pipe, and basically a matching pavement detail to match the existing pavement that's here. Again, like I said, it's going to be super-elevated from left to right, twenty-two feet in width. Anything else I forgot, Doug?
Nope, that about covers it.
You met with all the powers to be?
Yes, I did. We wrapped the fire line up, I believe we read into the letters from the DPW and from the fire chief about fire existing being satisfactory to maintain the properties.
Gentlemen, any questions? So he's looking for a determination of access from the planning board?
Yes.
Okay. Having we've discussed this, and discussed it, and discussed it, and I would make a motion that we, the plan as submitted, and consider the continuation of James Street as shown on this plan to provide adequate access to the two lots in the back.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, you're by law with you, John?
I do, I'm going to give you the rest of the prints and all the paperwork that goes with it, copies of deed, applications. Hold them up, nice, so we can know it. And Kevin Labonte at Pembroke has the tenth one in their office.
Start. Okay, get all the stuff in again.
Okay. Receipt.
Date them all.
Thank you, sir. It's already filled out, it's on the best of time.
Have you, have you been by the startup house on, on Main Street? And gotten it framed, and got some, some plascore on the, on the side of it, and then it just stopped? Somebody else just bought it, and they're working on it now. I've never seen a house quite like it. The front steps go up like ten feet to get to the quote, front entrance of the thing. It is the strangest looking thing I've seen in quite some time.
I guess it's a split entry, but.
I get, I get tired thinking about making the snow. The snow from the steps, for crying out loud.
What is this?
It's out on the, the very north end of town. It's before, before Quaker Lane, on the next to, one of the orchards.
It's right after the chicken.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's the one.
Oh, the second one, there is one built right by the museum.
I don't know what it is.
They want a lot of money for that house.
The way it sits. I. So we buy building. It's right on, right before, between the Quaker Meeting House and where the henhouse used to be. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a little set of steps either. I mean, it literally goes up ten feet, and they're wide.
I just bought it, the problem was they try to keep it out of the water.
Oh, they did that. They put it on the flood zone and everything else.
I don't think there's a water problem over there. I, the gravel. I don't know.
That's when drainage out there, we should be so lucky.
The other side of the road is. Yeah, usually, it's been pretty good on, yeah, the west side of, of.
On the site.
Reduce certificates and the special permit. But you get further north, it gets a little water.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, near the front. Definitely a split entry, you just don't see that many around here. Thank you.
You have a place to sign with your name. Oh, I see. The board board is side four, first lever.
Yep.
The other two.
Yep.
Sorry, folks, while we take our time and sign all these papers.
So you get your fifty-six picked out yet, or just fifty-six in general?
I, I got one that I like, but I don't know yet. I sold some other toys for us. It was all about one hour.
People call them the rest of warrants, I like those, I think they're kind of, you get to, nice power over here, bottom there. Here, a few of them. Nice stance, bad tires.
That has four feet.
See, you have to make it.
We changed the washing game out, the motor.
No, I've got a antenna. I'm never home. I was paying over two hundred dollars a month.
I gather, if you're out there, it's a good thing.
I get the news in the morning when I have my coffee, and it's nice to have a good day, you know?
With that, we're all set?
All set.
The Mylar, take that, as always, when you create a registry date, hold on, give her the book and the page.
You have TV at night to watch Nash. What more do you want?
Cause every quarter by your side.
Eight-track recorder.
Well, since they have a world, those eight, those eight tracks never lasted for more than a couple of months. Even when they were real brand, they sucked that thing in, it was gone.
Boy, you had them taken. You didn't know until you pulled it out, though.
He, part of the tape stayed in.
Yeah, then just.
All right, good evening, gentlemen, have a good holiday.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy new year and all. With that, let's see, being eight fifteen, we're right there. We're going to go into executive session, is that correct?
Correct.
With that.
Which part?
Deepwater.
Okay. I'll be back when we're done.
Get yourself. The TV goes off?
Uh, yes, you need to have the TV running while we do the roll call to go into executive session.
Okay. We are going to executive session for confidential legal issues. Do I have to say Deepwater, right?
Concerned Deepwater.
Deepwater. With that, there are roll calls to go into executive session. Mark De Silva?
Yes.
Brian De Shamps?
Yes.
Phil Mello?
Yes.
Mark Sannerizio?
Yes.
Rick Ellis, recuses as of this one. With that, we'll go into executive session and go back into public session. We are back from executive session into public session. With that, we, tell me what I got to say, Andy.
We have made the motion to accept the covenant and endorse the approved plan for Deepwater.
We have, with the motion, do we have to do it again?
Nope, we made the motion.
The motion, we just have to sign the papers.
We just need to do the signing.
Oh, you already voted?
Yes.
Yep. So on that, we just have to, each one of us sign this.
Have to sign the covenant, there are two copies, one for.
Covenant of restrictions.
On regard to the notary, do you have one member?
No, not a year.
What's that?
Uh, we can do that tomorrow.
We take it to the Tom Clerk, and she'll notarize it first of all, because it's on TV.
Okay. Do you mind coming back and picking it up?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Get me out of the office.
These two look around at?
I see about the official plan.
Yeah, I think they have a few on the table, but.
Just in case.
I have several that ran out, I think, and signing the plans, if you remember.
And with that, we have to sign the Mylar and the plans.
We have, just put a date. Today's date. On the date sign. And there's every single sheet.
Did you print nicely?
What's that?
Did you print nicely?
Can I?
It's with the date on. You got your fancy pen, make sure.
I just need a little bit of space.
I've been writing all night, my hands are shaking.
Almost a year to the day, Mr. Chairman. Twelve fourteen seventeen.
When was your child born, Paul?
March fourteenth.
Okay, I remember the day.
Sixteen.
Yep.
Still, you're going to say?
Yeah. Today is what, today is?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
And then, you know, I can, I'll scan and send you PDFs and however many sets that. Yeah, yeah.
You want to say, Brian, your sentence?
Yeah, I signed one, yeah.
Yep, one, two, three, four.
And now we get into trouble.
We're going to keep opening so they get notarized?
Yes, and then the party will come tomorrow and pick it up.
That's fine, yes.
You'll pick up the cabinet.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call.
Uh, yes, you do. Thank you, sir.
Just going to date that, but. Mark, that's just. Are you?
Yeah.
Line two, three, that's all we have, is two signatures back then?
That must be.
You and me and who, Brian?
Yeah.
Well, that one of nights, I just spaced it.
I remember, because this time, you were working a lot of overtime.
I'm doing that now.
I know that, but at this time, they were just starting to do something.
Oh, was that that Saturday or Friday or something, you guys came in? Could that have been that? You guys came in the next day, and I couldn't make this work. Came in early.
I remember you had, you had a.
Twelve fourteen last year.
Yeah.
Oh, a year to the day, holy mackerel. How many copies for the Mylar is it, Bob, huh?
Sixteen sheets.
Um, were they, can we pull those back for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, yes. On the other side, just making sure. We can just take them through all the dates.
Yeah, sure.
You got one, you got two. So, yeah. I think we got them all.
I'll go, I'll show you these over here, Mark. Two, three.
Good, we're out of the champagne. Yeah. With that, you know, once you.
Hey, that was pretty easy.
Into the registry of deeds, please give us a book and a page.
Yes, sir.
With that.
Long time coming, huh? I would say.
We're done.
Well, hopefully, something will get built there soon.
Tomorrow, we will have these notarized, we will keep one copy. You will get one copy, okay? Is there any particular time that you want to?
I think Bob was going to call.
Yeah, how are you going to get to her?
Donna will be here tomorrow at eight thirty, so she'll probably bring it all to me.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, maybe.
You have any problem, call me or call Donna.
Sure.
And she should have it all done for you tomorrow morning.
Does she put, um, how does that work? Does she put a date date?
I'm not sure. This says December fourteenth, twenty eighteen, you had that one notarized?
Well, ours are, but I'm just thinking in terms of the planning board.
Probably tomorrow's date. Will that mess they got, should, well, she could, it depends. Because she has to notarize it, and we did it today. Because she has to notarize it, and we did it today, she sees it, so I don't think the date will make...
Oh, okay, you don't, you don't actually have a date up. You signed it, but there's no...
No, right.
Oh, okay, all right, I got it, that's fine.
All set with that?
Yep.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you guys.
Thank you very much.
And with that, our next meeting will be January 17, 2019. Anything you guys want to say, anybody? We got anything? Plan is update, we're all set, everybody happy? With that?
I make a motion, we close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At 8:38. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody, we'll see you next year.